Evening, everyone. Please be advised this meeting is being recorded at six o'clock, so let's call this meeting. Right for the place.
Alright. What's your name? Thank you very much. And to the public, what's your say? What makes you, under God, the people, we can get justice for all?
First on the agenda is a continuation of the site plan review for ninety-six slash ninety-eight Menan Road, which is the daughters of charity.
Hi, good evening. I'm Amy Dick. It's charity Menan Road, three quarters. Uh, very pleased to be seeing you in a situation of a public hearing. Um, as you recall, the last meeting, we got a comment that it's been a bit of an idiot. Um, please report that dangerous persons being contacted. Responded, or were not identified in the address of the tenant. Some of them have sustained by clients, uh, on their requests. Dan's gonna highlight some of the reports you've heard from the public here, if you're aware, um. We think at this juncture, um, we're ready to consider expanding the area, setting up people. I'm on here, chapter one sixty-nine, uh, if we back with the process, we will be able to meet any comments, um. And I think that it's clear, uh, fuck, we're not. That'll be the beginning. Thank you. Thank you. Since the last time, we made some change. What do you think, Greg? I'm just not sure if I'm down and entered. I'm just trying to find out, I, I said something, a hundred years' time, we need to start setting up. Second, there's seven, two, three, four, five, six. I haven't had a chance, you know, a hundred years' time, it's not that easy. He's, he's pulling your clothes, wouldn't really make it, but we'll check it. Before we go, we need to stop. I'm not, it's all less than my beer reason. I have one year's time, and your charge is eight, charge four point one, I guess. And persisting charges, we should, we're just charging thirty percent, but it, also check the twenty-four. And we got thirty percent. Well, this is all I get, what I can argue about, is women who are in the situation. That, that's still on stream on. And before we start giving our little changes, we want our opportunity to complete our application for, um, under the, um, foreign engineers. We obviously have a one-hand screw right here. Check it out for a check of an anchor, tell me, God, what's called a PCN, we can work the purpose. The thing I was supposed to respond to in thirty days, doesn't already make it bigger. And that was submitted, uh, last week, a vaccine, we are a record. Maybe just one more thing. We had the opportunity to watch, uh, two days with the fire chief. Not a part of it, uh, that's a special recognition. So steep that that department, uh, so we could, uh. This is the repair car tire, or car project to show how it works. And we showed the highlights where it either, we think it's up to steam, but I may predict the fire chief, we don't give any advice, aren't we, Bill? I mean, it's changed, we'll just make a change, we don't want anything that doesn't apply with fire chief. Lives upon and doesn't apply to the state of. We also have the opportunity to have a, um, a change of nature, with leasing. If she has some concerns, then we, we're able to address those, uh. We're still regarding the planning plans we do before they address some things like location of patterns and, uh, uh, and, uh, water systems. But ensuring that we're gonna do whatever it needs to satisfy itself, that we're totally about. Those are the major things that happened since the last one, other than, oh, yeah, I think we're able to see it. I'd probably be fine, I'd provide a, uh, celebration. Any questions, don't worry about it.
Bill, did you report that, please, please put the board address first.
Um, just like the past, I'm having seen what it could be done. It's many, big advocate, somebody would pay, we're gonna try to do that. In this project.
On here, um, the only something, that's what I'm thinking, probably all things, is what's here, that's hard to come up with. Everything there today, all the soil back here, um, they're in the back, you know, percolating, so. You're, you're, okay, if you think, if you plan a rain guard, it's about the magnitude, using, uh, using, um, I think that, how can we act on action basis? We try to think of something that has the best selection of water, and it consisted with, uh, the earth's name, or more than that.
That's nice, though. And, uh, but that, my question, and, uh, so, so somebody else can practice.
Yeah. All of our names, very closely, we, uh, prepared, wrapped up the door, and it's made, uh, uh, most of the package, depending on the super review. And we also prepared what's called a, uh, a re, uh, infrastructure design, uh, outline, and that's, that's sort of, not part of our script.
Anyone else support?
Alright. Yeah, the optimism is the most, but.
This project, I didn't even wanna guess. It became, it's a, it's a massive project in the beginning, for the number of things we found out, since it's a lot, it's possible, have to be. Activation, the, uh, increase in construction costs over the couple of, two years since we first submitted the application, has been significant. So, I don't want to project your, well, really, but, but, I follow what's being to give this project. Uh, the first day, in about two years, I think, they just started. They, the credit base, the first stay in the correct thing, they're not coming without. The bound, the credit base, for those in the future, and it's also based upon when you're managing, they don't wanna build projects if they don't have that. And we're, we're, we should give the public. Even, okay, like a lot of, a lot of these projects, they, they, they're all announced, I mean, existing funds, and they would borrow money, and they get one. Um, but I appreciate answering all your questions, just so we're going to, I still support, but, uh, well, culture, probably. Like, they're going to do this work, please, do this part. Thank you. You thought? Any other support?
Bring up for the comment, uh. Is Matt up? Yeah. Okay. Uh, well, we're still on public hearing, so let's focus public hearing. And then we're gonna open a public, or continue a public hearing on fifty-fifty-six Clifford.
Hold on now, hold, give me a second, I have, somebody said this sound really bad. Here we go.
Dominic? Go for it.
You can use my easel. The rent will then go up from the last time.
What's this? Let me go through, like, projects quickly, we haven't, we haven't made any changes since last time. Um, we have, uh, the, uh, village designated engineer has, has a plan, I, we responded with him, little bit sick. In an email, look for a little, make, I guess they have it on a forty-two, I would know. Uh, we haven't made any changes, we just really provided a little more information to the village designated engineer for review. And to get up to, what questions, or concerns, or that.
Uh, did, did Lobella, uh, provide you with a comment letter?
One more thing, of course. Uh, we did speak to, so, so I spoke with, um, I met Justin Grimes, uh, we're DOT at the property. Um, he stated, he gets no concerns, in fact, he said there is a drainage pipe that runs along the back, three seventy-eight, he were wondering, my friend Ray, about three seventy-eight, um, and their drainage, um, he said there's no issue with that, and, uh.
No issue with you tying into it, or no issue?
No, no issue, we're not tying into it at all. With the amount of, with the amount of improvements we've put, or additional pavement, and don't think he has no issues with any of the water.
Yeah, but he lives up, they, they're up the hill, and then down.
Justin Grimes is the resident engineer for.
He's a resident. Okay, I thought you were talking about, I thought you were talking about DOT, uh.
The DOT resident engineer.
Right.
Which we asked us to contact.
But it would be their drainage pipe?
So we're sheet draining, pardon me if I'm wrong, right, we're sheet draining to the back of the property, and there was some concern from people if we're okay to drain on the DOT property. And if there was provisions for that, and if there is a pipe in the ground, and there's no issue with how the water runs off three seventy-eight, and now our property's gonna drain towards their property, they don't have any, any issue with that.
Can you get something from DOT?
Yep, I have a one email, yeah, I have one email right now, just waiting for, get time out of the desk, though, to send me another email, just, so I haven't writing, I wish I had it for tonight, but I have to, I have to give you guys that information.
Um, anyone?
I, I, uh, the location of the, of the, um, dumpster appears to be into the parking area, which makes it visible. Uh, wouldn't it make more sense to push it up? Further alongside the building where it's out of view?
Are you, are you?
And, and, yeah, right, right, exactly.
Well, it's gotta be enclosed, it'll be enclosed.
Well, the one that's there now isn't enclosed, which it should be.
This one will be one of, this one will be.
The parking lot is in pretty poor condition, the.
Yeah, no, I'm absolutely right, it'll be fully enclosed with a gate. Um, and it'll, it'll match the.
Why would you want it though, like, kind of? Why not push it back four or five feet, alongside the building?
Oh, back this way?
Yeah, I guess we can, as long as, as long as the garbage company can get to it, that's fine, and it's.
Oh, surely could, I'm just saying, it would seem to make more sense to push it somewhat out of sight.
We can.
Is that, is that, is that, you see what I'm talking about?
Yeah. Well, personally, if I'm wrong, wasn't there an issue with the previous thought? And, and that's why it was put there, was because that's where the residents had expressed that they wanted it to be?
Well, it was over here.
Correct.
And it works better for everybody here.
Yeah, I, I agree, so.
Pushing it back, five feet or so. And you know, you must have used it here.
Okay. So, is that possible, Dominic?
Move it.
Yes, okay. That would satisfy.
You know, it's gonna be.
Yeah, it'll still be enclosed, it's just, it'll look up a little bit more space, it's trying to push it behind the building.
Okay.
And, and the enclosure, what is that going to feel, I still don't see the elevations, or, I asked last time for your architect to submit elevations.
The enclosure has to be according to the code, and be, uh, by an overhead.
Okay. Alright, what about the elevations of the building?
Okay, we do have an elevation in the building. Um, we have a front elevation, and it'll turn like, uh, it's not necessarily colored, because this really hasn't been colored scheme picked yet, but that's pretty much the building, the old buildings look exactly the same, it was, and you never gonna use any color. Um, this is the front from the parking lot, but, so it would be.
And then the.
The view you see from is the same.
Yeah, right, and then the, and then the buildings that are, the older buildings are gonna be redone to match as a roll custom, so they're all the same?
Yeah, no, they want it all to look the same, and part of the reason why we've kind of delayed some of the driveway thing is this is gonna be ripped up here rather shortly. You know, you said the driveway's in disrepair.
Right, it's, it's rough, yeah.
So, you're absolutely right, we had it passed a few times, but we're kind of like, okay, we're gonna, you know, it's like throwing good money after bad, here.
Good, fine, you, uh, don't have anything on me.
So Matt's running late, um.
Um. Hey, Brian, it's Lauren, I'm here.
Hi, Lauren. Do you have any comments or concerns about, uh, fifty-six Clifford?
Um, it's a little hard to hear you, but I think you asked if there's any, uh, comments or concerns? Yes?
Fifty-six Clifford project.
Okay, yeah, um, so I haven't done a full review of that plan yet, so I have nothing of note as of right now. Um, I did go by the site, um, and I, I did see that there are some, um, there is a steep slope along the highway there. Um, but it sounds like if we're draining towards the back of the site, that's, um, gonna be a lot better, uh, situation than cheap flowing to the road, so. Um, once I do a full review, I'll have, I'll have a more in-depth answer for you, though.
Okay, so are you in possession of the comments, or, or there?
Did you respond to the comment letter, the initial comment letter?
I haven't got any comment.
Okay, so have we, we have not issued a comment letter, Lauren?
No, we have not issued a comment letter yet, um, I believe I'm still missing some, um, documentation required with a, for preliminary, um, site plan review.
Do you know specifically what those items might be, Lauren?
Um, I would have to look, um, but I, I don't believe I have received the SWIP, um, which is definitely gonna be one of the more important items for me to review.
We discussed that for the next meeting.
So if it's less than an acre, is this, they're saying a SWIP is not required?
Um, a full SWIP won't be required, a, what's called a, a basic SWIP is required, which, um, consists of only erosion and sediment control practices. Um, so I'll need to see that.
Okay, so what, what they do for erosion control, et cetera?
Yep.
What their actual plan is?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
We're gonna need to see what their erosion control and practices for the construction is going to be?
Correct, yep.
Okay, so, uh, we have a long period between now and our next meeting, so I'm sure that would be adequate time for all these issues to be resolved, is that fair, Lauren?
Yep, that's fair, um, and I plan on reviewing what I have in my possession, uh, by the end of this week, so.
Okay, with, and we don't have a public hearing then?
Correct. So we will close the public hearing, unless there's anything further from the general public?
I have a question.
Sure.
Um, how many units?
Wait, Lauren, please state your name and.
Oh, Lauren Harbor Town, um, just curious, how many, how many units, I missed it at the last meeting.
How many units total, or how many were in?
Total.
Twenty-four.
And how, how many parking spots?
Forty-nine.
I just don't, I, you know, from the street, you can't see the parking.
Yeah.
Like, it's in the back somewhere?
Well, right now, there is no, it's not, it's not built yet.
Yeah, no, I know.
Oh, it'll be, yes, it'll be, I guess it'll be in the back, yeah, most of it, you're not gonna see it from the street as well, because it slows down above the.
Yeah, I guess it's just an optical illusion when you drive by, because you go, oh, they're putting two additions on, so that, that looks like this, you know, visually, that's the space behind the two current structures.
Yes.
And it's like, where are you putting fifty cars? Forty-nine cars, I, you don't need to show me, I just, it'll be on the site line, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Those four numbers?
Yeah. Anyone else?
Paul, Pauline, I live in Manayos, I have a question, why is, um, where's the total area that will be in previous, I believe it was?
Gotta look. I believe it's, uh, total area, do you, would you like percentages, or just the area?
Total area that will, uh.
George, what?
Eight point, point eight-three acres.
Twenty-three. And how much fun is that, a hundred-year storm?
I don't know. I don't know off the top of my head, but, based on, this area is about, one of the, it's like, seven, I think, seven-point-four, I think is the, under here storm. We even stuffs on my, yeah, something like that, so, over that area, it's not, it's not gonna be a lot. Might be less than ten CFS. I would guess, but I don't know, I, I haven't run a calculation, because it was necessary to.
That's something that can be addressed by the engineer, if they consider it as the initial.
Right? Yeah, yeah.
Would be nice to see a. Well, that identifies that as an issue, that's something.
That's what we, DOT might, just sometimes, they just want to know how much is coming, just to make sure, and they took a look at it, and they said they were.
It would be nice to see a poll, Peter.
Well, there's a grading, there is a grading plan that shows all the, that, uh, the village engineer has, that shows, uh, the conifers and everything, how's everything's graded?
Anyone else in the public? Bill?
Alright, are those two buildings gonna have any elevators, or no? Alright, now, I'm gonna, and how many tenants are supposed to live there?
Well, there's twenty-four units, so, at least twenty-four.
Alright, now, even what I worry about this project is, where I've heard worries from people that's gonna be crowded, it's not in the, it's lack of land, and they create heavy traffic, but because the housing is, this type of project's needed, you know, I will reluctantly support only very reluctantly, because the need for housing and the demand for it's gonna keep going up, so I'll give you my support again, only reluctantly, thank you.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Alright, hearing no further comment, close the public hearing at six-twenty-one. Thank you, guys.
We're gonna be, um, stick around for more, or comments, or.
Well, uh, yeah, I would stick around. Yeah. Uh, next is a public hearing regarding local law number seven, amending chapter one sixty-nine of the. Um, Don, do you have a notice? Please.
Public hearing will be held on Monday, September fifth, twenty-twenty-three, at six PM, regarding local law number seven, twenty-twenty-three, and a continuation of the public hearing for ninety-eight Menan Road, fifty-fifty-six A, Clifford Road. Local law seven of the village man, amending chapter one sixty-nine of zoning of the Menan Village Code. All occurs to attend, and submit comments to clerk Canderhand by noon, September twenty-fifth, but September fifth, twenty-twenty-three.
Now, before we open the hearing, did we receive any comments in writing?
Um, none of this, no.
If you're gonna speak on local law number seven, please identify yourself and any affiliation that you may have. Anyone?
I'm in support, uh, my name's Lauren Harbor Town, I'm in support of local law number seven.
Thank you, Lauren. Hi, Bill.
Alright, I'm Bill Garbi, I live here in Manayos, as you all know. Yes, I'll support that for general welfare, health, environment, and economic and other reasons, so. I would urge the village board to please approve this local law number seven, you know, chapter one sixty-nine, please do it, that's what we all urge you to do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bill.
You're welcome.
Chuck Price, resident of Menans, and I am also in support of proposed local law number seven.
Thank you, Chuck. Anyone? Anyone online? Hearing no further comment, we'll close the public hearing on local law number seven, six-twenty-three. Alright. Where are we at, Don?
Motion to approve the, then it was twenty-twenty-first, August twenty-first, Courtney.
My question.
Second? All those in favor? Any opposed?
Abstained.
Law number seven, general, one-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty dollars and nineteen cents. Water, eighty-three thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars and ninety-nine cents. Sewer, forty-two thousand, seventy-seven dollars and eighty-six cents, totaling two-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars, two-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand, five-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars and four cents. Payroll number seven, one-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand, five-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars and eight cents.
Motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Hold on for one second. I don't have this kind of.
Do you have any transfers?
There's no transfers, but, um. I have one transfer, a, a budget amendment. But. I'm gonna put this in, can we just check something, report? We'd make it a, last, last meeting, for sixty-two thousand, deposit for equipment, I don't know, wait, hold on, I didn't look at the minutes. It says, don't put, I found this in my minutes, or my notes, but I thought I'd put it in the minutes.
No, I don't think we did, um, I don't think we did.
Yeah, we.
Hold us to read that. Uh, the treasurer requests the board to approve a transfer from general fund savings account, sixty-two thousand dollars, and deposit as follows. Twenty-seven thousand dollars to the equipment savings, fifteen thousand dollars to the fire equipment savings, and twenty thousand dollars to the vehicle savings accounts. This will transfer the annual, uh, this will transfer the annual amounts the board approved to the various savings account. I make a motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Well, there's a lot, there's a lot of part of this, you wanna. Okay, I'm sorry, yeah, the, the following resolution, all authorities, and transfer for sixty-three thousand dollars to the general savings account, and deposits as follows, twenty-seven thousand to equipment savings, fifteen thousand dollars to fire equipment, and twenty thousand dollars to vehicle savings. Sorry, just to finish that.
Yep, thank you.
Regarding thirty-two, we'll, why don't we table that, uh, second meeting of October?
Any particular reasons?
Long meeting, uh, not a priority.
Okay, yeah, I would like to know more about it.
Yeah, uh, so I'll write a narrative, basically, it's just to get rid of that sliver of land.
There was a, there, we've done it past, and it's, it wouldn't be without precedent in that neighborhood, because there's been other areas that have been little slivers that have.
I'll write a narrative, and then we can talk, then we can talk.
Alright.
So, for the next meeting, so ten, what's that, ten, ten sixteen?
I think so, yeah.
Uh. Don, you wanna hit?
Yeah.
I need a motion to surplus DPW truck three to two thousand and eleven, two-and-a-half ton international pickup, um, for one that had the motor problems that we had, so we brought, had to buy the other one, but I need to surplus this, so I get it on to Washington International.
I move to surplus DPW truck number three.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
David. I have a few things tonight, um, start with the, start with the saw first, okay?
Come closer, please.
David.
Alright, firstly, we purchased a gas-powered saw for the fire apparatus, um, for twenty-six hundred dollars. We can return that with a three-hundred-dollar, uh, restocking fee, get twenty-three hundred dollars for the credit. We can then purchase battery-operated saws that perform the same job as that saw. The total for that is three thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars and eighty-nine cents. Uh, they're more efficient, uh, they start, it's off batteries charged. In today's day and age, everything is going to battery-operated, to improve the comfort.
And it cuts underwater.
Cuts underwater, but if they ever have to cut underwater, God help us, it's a selling point, it cuts underwater.
I don't wanna be the guy.
I'm a scuba diver, if you'd like me to test that for you.
So ultimately, the two, uh, if, if it's.
Say the number again.
It's in here, three thousand, four hundred and seventy-four. I make a motion to approve the purchase of the power cutter saw, chainsaw, and batteries at a cost of three thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars.
With the credit of twenty-three hundred dollars from returning the gas-powered saw.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed?
Next. Uh, initially in my budget, I had scheduled for three new portable radios totaling fourteen thousand, five hundred and forty-one dollars and twelve cents. Uh, through working through this year, we've decided that those are more of a luxury than a need. Uh, we've gotten quotes for five hundred feet of hose, six new nozzles, and a few adapters. That would be critical to the department itself. We depleted a lot of our reserve hose with the purchase of the new engine. Uh, so this is kind of just a restocking as well as unifying all the apparatus. So this hose initially will be used for the front bumpers, and we'll work our way back in unifying all the trucks. The grand total for that is ten thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars. So it's a difference of four thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars and twelve cents out of my initial budgeted item, uh, just amending my budget a little.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of nozzles, hoses, and adapters that cost ten thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Finally, the big one, a big one for now. I'm looking for the approval of sixty-nine thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars and thirty cents. This is would be for a twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five-hundred pickup truck. It'd be to replace the three-year plan of chief's vehicles. We currently have a two thousand and fifteen Ford Expedition that is coming up to replace. Uh, we put this plan in place ultimately nine years ago. This will be the first time we'll get to see how it pays off. Uh, the truck itself, through state contract, is fifty-nine thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty cents. According to the packet that they printed out, the MSRP is usually sixty-nine thousand and change. So through state contract, we get a little bit of a break. Uh, the lighting package through Auto Solutions is ten thousand, four hundred and thirty-one dollars and eighty cents. With that, we typically save ten thousand dollars a year out of our budget to go towards the purchase of a new vehicle. This is the first year we'll get to sell a vehicle to hopefully offset the cost even more. Uh, with that, we would like to put up the two thousand and fifteen Expedition for sale through sealed bid. We would set the minimum at twenty-two thousand, five hundred. And then we would open the bids and approve on October eleventh, twenty twenty-three, and approve the bid. Prove who the purchaser would be on the sixteenth of October board meeting. They would have thirty days to purchase the vehicle and remove it from our property. So it would be published through the paper and through Facebook.
So we need to declare that the...
So basically, what I had suggested after we talked about it was that we would not surplus it until the bid is received as accepted, is that correct?
Ultimately, we could surplus it once we take ownership and the redefined chief's vehicle is put into service, then we could remove that one from service and surplus it prior to...
But we already had in the, you already had in your budget for the new vehicle.
Yeah, we're just, we just kind of moved up the timeline a little.
Yeah, because, so we talked about what would be the op, the best vehicle for them, and an SUV is just not the best vehicle to have, so...
Specifically, the smaller SUVs. The Durango is great and all, um, it's tough to roof people, you can't really store anything in it. The pickup truck gives you the ability to put three, four-plus guys, hose after a call where you can just load everything up in order to tow the trailer that we traded the DPW for the other pickup truck. This pickup truck's going to give us the ability to tow that trailer now, where some of these smaller SUVs don't have the ability to.
In addition, the truck is more, it could potentially be used if we had to in an emergency for a DPW-type purchases, although that's not...
Not a primary function, but it is available, obviously, which means we have to move a generator or anything, you know what I mean?
So more or less, all you need is just an okay to move forward then, other than vote on something?
So we should probably vote on, uh, on soliciting bids for the twenty fifteen.
Yep.
Uh, and then the authorization for the chief to order the twenty twenty-four Chevy.
Yep, and then I talked with the treasurer, he said he would find the money, as reassuring as that is, uh, in typical bill.
So just to break down of the money, it looks like thirty-something, thirty or forty is coming out of your savings, which you already had allotted to this. Twenty-something is coming, twenty-two-five is coming from the sale of the vehicle. And then the additional money is, is what, is what, uh...
Is what I put aside.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the village would ultimately, we would have to find roughly seventeen thousand dollars, that's if the vehicle sells for the bare minimum. We hope that it sells for more, uh, the KGB on that truck right now is about fifteen thousand. So we hope that with the emergency lights that are being sold with it, it gets us to twenty-five, twenty-six, obviously, anything more is great. But even at twenty-two-five, that's more than we've ever been able to get for any of the previous chief's vehicles that we had. So with, with the sale, there's roughly seventeen thousand dollars. If we didn't have the potential sale of the vehicle that we have now, it's almost thirty-nine thousand dollars. So this is hopefully the plan working and continuing to work to offset as much cost for the village.
I make a motion to solicit bids for the twenty fifteen Ford Explorer.
Expedition.
Ford Explorer on there? No, Expedition.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then second, we need...
Sixty-nine thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars and thirty cents of fifty-nine thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty cents, which is for the truck itself, and then ten thousand, four hundred and thirty-one dollars and eighty cents, which is for the light fitting, lights and...
Um, and, uh, it's available when?
As soon as we have to check it's in stock.
Um... Yeah, we need a motion for that.
So I make a motion to approve the spending of sixty-nine thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars and thirty cents, um, on the twenty twenty-four truck, including the ten thousand, four hundred and thirty-one dollars for the lighting package.
A second, Bill.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? You made that pretty good tonight there. You better run while you can, so... Thanks, David.
No problem. Don will get you those number breakdowns and everything. Thank you, everybody.
You're welcome.
It's Dan Lee Nick used one of our vehicles this Sunday, right? Bring out a car fire, seven eighty-seven, Tony, TJ, and Nick, so...
Thank you for your service, man.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, go, Don.
Actually, we have in the village office, we have a steam heat system. And if you've ever been in there and it, like, somebody's mocking and they, and it's all the steam traps that have been there since the building was... The building's been there, I need permission to purchase, to replace all the steam traps, after Dwight, because our plumbing and heating, to replace the steam, there are seventeen steam traps, two blow traps, and one, one-inch blow trap, and it costed us five thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars.
So will this completely take care of the problem?
Yes. Because we've been, we've been trying to rebuild them, and it costs us, you know, three, four hundred dollars every time we rebuild, and it's still, another one, yeah. So what I like to do now that it's summertime where they can't, where you don't need to eat.
Right, and the system's empty at the same time.
All empty.
So do we have to get it through Dwight, or I mean, do we...
I actually followed around, I have, uh, I have a quote with me, but I have other quotes, and Dwight was...
Oh, we should include those.
Yeah, I filed that, I...
Dwight had the best.
He had the best.
What would you recall?
One was like seventy-two hundred from Farrell Brothers, and it was seventy-two, and, um, Bailey Dance, it was like nine thousand, because they're extremely...
I'll make a motion to accept the, uh, Dwight plumbing and heating, uh, to do our steam traps for five thousand, nine hundred and fifty.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? For anyone who has been in the office, it's, uh, quite interesting when the heat comes on, so hopefully this fixes that. All right, daughters of charity. Um, so in communicating with, with Matt, uh, he, he's not in, under the impression that we're ready to proceed via answers to his letter.
Um, okay, I mean, that's a surprise to us. Dan had responded to everything, provided the revised plans.
He's, uh, he has a standing meeting tonight, so he's, uh, he was unable to join initially, so, um...
And, and we have no objection to preliminary approval, subject to the condition that we satisfy all of Bella's comments. I mean, that's, that's a given, we have no issue with that whatsoever. We thought we had, it's fine.
You can do that.
We can do that?
You can do, you can issue preliminary site plan approval, subject to the conditions raised by, uh, LaBelle.
Okay, so all he said was they have, they have, we're waiting for responses on our review letter. Okay, Dan, you're, you're confident, uh, after reviewing the, the, the letter, that, that you can resolve all of the items that were outstanding?
Yes, yeah, whether or not they're satisfied exactly with my solution, is another question, that's why conditional upon their final approvals.
You still have the, the power of and the leverage of final site plan.
Does the board have objection to that?
I have none.
All right, so someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we, uh, get preliminary site plan approval of ninety-six Menance Road, daughters of charity, uh, pending conditions that are, are met by, uh, responses to LaBelle.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Amen. All right, next up is, is a discussion regarding fifty fifty-six Clipper. Uh, there's, my opinion, there's still some outstanding issues, okay, with, with, that need to be addressed. Um, and I believe my colleagues agree.
Yes.
Um, so...
Table that.
Dominic, can we make sure that, that you have the letter from LaBelle, uh, which you will have before the end of this week, and then responded to, uh, along with some of the questions that have come from the board, to make sure that we're ready for this on October third, second?
Now we include the information from DOT on the...
Yeah, okay.
As well, as well as, uh, the plan showing where the dumpster is going to be located and the materials to be stored.
Well, it's going to be the same spot, just move it back. Yeah, that actually might work a little better for the truck.
Absolutely.
We'll get to the DOT, I don't think there was anything else we were bored at, concerned with, except...
Right, so on, on the second, we'll, we'll do, the public hearing's closed, we'll do a quick update as far as resolving those issues that the engineer presents them, uh, respond, respond to those in kind, and then the board will ask any follow-up questions, and then, and then we'll be ready for...
So I have to deal directly with LaBelle before that, I have to sminter that, because that would be... Well, they just have to let us know.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, if, if, yeah, you could...
LaBelle will, you deal with, with LaBelle, LaBelle advises.
Yes, as you heard, Lauren, Lauren, who was on the call, will be getting you that letter before the end of this week.
If you get everything addressed, there's...
Yeah, I know what it's...
Preliminary and final site.
Yeah, there's no reason you can't do that.
That was the first time they were looking at it, so I expect some to come back.
Yeah. Yeah, all right.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Local law number seven. Um, do any of the board members have anything they'd like to talk about regarding local law number seven?
I, I mean, for the same things that I, I brought up last time, I definitely want to address the concerns that, uh, that the community is, is brought up. Um, I certainly, um, I certainly understand those, uh, those concerns, and I want to address those. I'm just not sure that, A, this is the way to do it, and B, I still think that there are some significant legal issues with it. So, um, at this point, uh, that, that's, that's, those are my reservations with, with local law number seven. Again, I do have ideas for how to, um, deal with, with concerns, but that, um, I'm not sure this is the way to do it at this point.
Well, I think this is more looking forward for, you know, anything, anything else, but I mean, there are many business news that, that, you know, we have that are under, you know, require, uh, you know, uh, um, you know...
Especially, especially...
Yes, yes. You know, this, this wouldn't be, you know, it just, it's just the standards are all laid out, here's, you know, here's what the standards are, so basically, it's just community, community standards that have been established on our new zoning. I, and I don't think they're different than what it was in the old zone, to be honest, with the, with, you know, with the requirements are.
Right, no, no, I know the requirements, yeah, I just think it creates, it, it has a potential, yeah, yeah. It has potential to create, uh, issues, and I don't know, it seems to me, uh, to quote, uh, Justice Sotomayor, it seems like a, a solution in search of a, of a problem i- in the future. So it's not really addressing anything now.
Anyone else? No? No? I need a motion.
I make a motion to approve local law number seven of twenty twenty-three.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Is anyone opposed?
Nay.
Thank you.
All right, um, Bill, we received your, 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 all your, your items.
I'm not seeing anything further. I do have a few issues.
Go ahead, Bill.
Remember at the picnic, we were talking about having about those old-fashioned street light markers on both sides of Broadway that have been in poor condition? Just so everybody knows, I do support the idea to replace the old black, old-fashioned steel street light markers on both sides of Broadway, replace them with aluminum ones. Those old ones are just too tough to re, to repair and to install, and some of these lights, some of them don't light up half the time. So I, so I would recommend do that. And I need to know, when will the street light marker replacement project begin, do you know?
Still working on it with National Grid.
All right, and how long is it going to take to get the project done?
Have to look at the scope of work first.
You don't know, all right.
I don't know, sorry.
What about the cost?
Don't know.
All right, but I'd like to recommend if village gets state and federal money grants to, to this project to help pay for it.
Absolutely.
All right, another thing, when will the Menance Lily baseball restroom building be re, reutilization work begin? Because we've been waiting now.
We're still waiting for the money from the state.
And the answer to the question is, why is it taking so long for the village to get the state money?
They asked the state in New York and Alex.
And who do I ask?
Uh, Governor Hope?
Sorry, but she's not a friend of mine.
All right.
Now, even...
And I wouldn't ask her, Bill.
Please, she's no friend of mine. Now, even, and now Karen Stewart has been asking about this, so she asked me to ask these questions, so I'm going to have to tell her. I, one more thing, the other night, you know, around five forty Sunday afternoon, I was at Menan Road, and I saw the door to the concession stand open.
Yes, we're aware of that.
And I knocked, and then nobody was in there. So I just stayed there, waited, waited for the police to come. I asked one of the neighbors who lives there, I'm not releasing his name, because I'm afraid it might backfire.
It's the same case.
Okay.
I didn't want, don't want to release his name for the fear it might backfire. I asked him if he can call the police, so I didn't want to leave the area because I'm afraid that someone's going to break in, steal stuff.
Well, they did, so we're working on it.
All right, so the police, so when the kids came in there, those five black ones, I got nothing against blacks, don't get me wrong, but they, they went in there, and the windows where the customers received their foods and drinks was moving, and the guy scared them out of there. I said to those kids, you should not be in this building, you got no business being there.
Thank you.
But so, but at least I didn't want to confront with them, Bob, because I didn't want no confrontation, but I'm glad he did. Now, the next time it happens, Brian, what should I do? Should I go to the police immediately? I'd be, the problem is, what if I leave and someone does break in? Or sets it on fire, or steals things, or bombs or something, this is what I'm afraid of.
You're right there.
I'll remember that the next time, but at least I've done the right thing to stay there until the police came, until someone... But that's all I got for today, so thanks for letting me speak on these important issues.
Thank you, Bill.
You're welcome.
Got some?
I do, as a matter of fact. Okay, I'm Chuck Price, uh, and of course, I'm a resident of Menance. I'm here tonight to request that you authorize the zoning board of appeals to hear my late filed zoning appeal.
I understand the village attorney, my friend Steve, has advised you to enforce the sixty-day deadline for filing, but I respectfully disagree. Uh, I believe there's compelling legal and ethical factors that warrant you to deviate from that practice. Specifically, New York Village Law seven dash seven twelve A five B grants the ZBA discretion to allow late appeals. And that statute specifically states that the ZBA may hear a late appeal if, defines there's a good cause for doing so. Second, general city law eighty-one C states that procedural errors alone don't invalidate proceedings. So this means the fact that I missed the deadline doesn't necessarily mean my appeal should be dismissed. Case law like penis held that late filings are allowed for public policy causes, such as when the delay was due to the board's own actions. There's been discussions as far as the lack of transparency, so I would argue that the board has played a role in the late filing of that appeal. Uh, and the village board has general equity powers to waive technical violations when substantial justice requires it. So the sixty-day window isn't, isn't locked in necessarily. And this important zoning official, uh, issue affects the entire community. And denying a review based on a technicality would violate principles of transparency and your obligation, uh, as representatives of the community. Uh, I humbly suggest the village attorney may have overlooked some applicable statutes and precedents giving you discretion on deadlines. And I'm asking each one of you to, uh, exercise independent judgment to determine if this matter warrants going beyond the standard advice. So there are, there's inarguably disputes when it comes to interpreting different laws, different zoning, uh, provisions and things of that sort. And typically, when you have these kinds of discrepancies, it either ends up going before a judge or before some sort of a zone, or, or board, in this case, the zoning board of appeals. And so my argument would be that if Steve got it right, and it goes to the zoning board of appeals, then we all have peace of mind. He got it right. However, I think as a matter of transparency, I brought up several valid cases or instances where an OTP does not fit the current zoning, or the zoning when they first came in. So for that reason, for the fact that I think I have built a compelling case, and I've submitted an appeal, just because it was outside of the sixty-day window, I'm asking the board to send this to the zoning board of appeals and to get a determination from that body. That's my request tonight.
Steve, do you want to address the timeliness issue in relation to the law?
Address the timeliness issue. Uh, Chuck, you know, you, you have my, uh, my email.
I do.
Uh, the section of the village code that specifically talks about sixty, sixty days.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the section of the, New York State Village Law that referred to, I don't read that as providing the, you and I can agree to disagree. I don't read that as providing the, uh, zoning board of appeals with the discretion to waive the filing requirements and the, the deadlines there. With respect to the general city's law, general city's law doesn't apply to the village. Um, and the section of the, the general city's law that you referenced was, uh, a section that relates to Article seventy-eight, uh, proceedings with respect to decisions, uh, administrative decisions that are made, uh, by zoning board of appeals. That's the, if you don't agree with what the zoning board of appeals determines with respect to your appeal, you have the ability to then go on and, and file an Article seventy-eight.
So what I meant, which I, you know, uh, certainly we don't need to get that far. So you suggested that I, uh, uh, get counsel. I don't think I need counsel. I think what I need is our elected officials to do the right thing. And let.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. We're not, we're not doing a back and forth here. You have the opportunity to make public comment, make your public comment.
Okay, I, I don't have a right to respond to.
Go, go, go ahead.
Okay. So again, there's, there's a potential disagreement here in interpretation. There's no disagreement that the village board has general equity powers to waive technical violations for substantial justice requirements. I don't think that there's an argument there. So on those grounds, I believe that the board has the ability to recommend that the appeal go to the ZBA.
I, when I read this, I'm not, you know, I, I don't see.
Yeah, we should have this discussion interjected. We're not, we're not, we're not going to have this.
Chuck's allowed to make his.
This is a public comment period. Anyone else can make public comment.
Right.
Chuck, are you done?
I am. Thank you.
Laura?
Following Mr. Price, I can't agree more. I guess my, my question is, why do you file an appeal like this that Chuck presented to you all? Does it stop at Steve's desk, or do you guys get to see it before he stops it?
I don't understand your question.
The question is, Chuck prepared the document.
We all received it, the whole board.
You all received it?
Yep.
So you see the talking points.
Absolutely.
Extenuating circumstances, and with dire circumstances this small village is in regarding the facility that we're speaking in. The dire, dire straits here. And I think there's extenuating circumstances where the village board certainly could use their discretionary, uh, powers to go ahead and get this in front of the zoning board of appeals. You're stopping it before it even gets turned down to the zoning board of appeals. And I don't understand that. And I think you owe it to the residents, all the residents that were not notified about this facility upfront, not having any knowledge about this facility upfront, and being blessed with having to solve the world's problems in a town where there's only forty-five hundred people living, is absurd. And it's on you all up there that are standing there now. And I know, Steve, you know, you're about getting legal advice, so I, I have handed this off and I have hired an attorney to oversee this zoning, to keep it deeper to the zoning, because I feel like we're just bashing our head against the wall, that you don't seem to understand that the city of Albany has lost control of that facility on Central Avenue. I sent it to a couple of people on the board, the interview that was done regarding coming on the way though, and how the entire police force and the judicial system is absolutely exhausted in city Albany, from that, just that facility. They're talking about seven windows up the street here. Nothing is going to change. We are going to have that same situation here if something doesn't get done. Stop throwing your feet and take some action. That's my public comment. Thank you so much.
Yeah. Anyone else? Sure, go sit there.
Hello, I'm Cindy Price. I'm a resident here in the village. Um, I'm not quite as, uh, quick on my feet, so I have to read right there. Good evening, board members, fellow, uh, neighbors. I think the big question is, did everybody vote, um, denying our appeal? Uh, was it a, you know, consensus thing? We'd like to know that. We all understand the importance of offering treatment, but with this letter that I had here, signed by the mayor, Mayor of Albany, uh, Assembly, uh, Pat, uh, Pat Fahy, John McDonald, Neil Breslin, Dan McCoy, they're basically begging, uh, we.
Coming on the way.
We know the way to move. They say they have a spot, but they just can't have it in the spot that it's at right now. So they're, they're basically begging here for a meeting, uh, with the Commissioner of, uh, Office and Addiction Services and Support and the New York State Office of Mental Health. Um, so we're looking for consideration also in the placement of these facilities. It's imperative that these locations are chosen, chosen, uh, with the border community involved. Um, I know addiction knows no limits. It doesn't have any bound, boundaries or anything. But this one in Albany has started with a hundred patients, and now it's up to five hundred. So that's the town of, I mean, the village of, uh, the city of Albany that can't deal with it. How are we going to deal with it? We're a little tiny town, you know, we just don't have the resource, and they're begging for them to get it out of here. Uh, I understand well advocates emphasizing the rights of those in treatment. We also have to remember that the homeowners and the longstanding residents of the community. For many of these homes represent not just a shelter, but years of hard work, memories, and a big financial investment. And I think all of those people were part of this, uh, appeal that we were trying to do to the zoning board. Um, we really would like to get an answer who approved it, who disapproved it, how of our, our appeal. We'd like to know that. Or if it was just dead and nobody got to look at it. Uh, to conclude, to conclude, our collective goal should be to create a harmonious environment where both treatment facilities and the residents can coexist. Uh, we implore the board to weigh the far-reaching consequences of these proposed amendments and make choices that truthful, truly reflect the best interest of the village. Your attention and understanding to this matter is greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Anyone else?
My name is Bill Evans. I live in a village on Wolford Avenue. You're going to go in executive session and discuss the, uh, requests. I really hope you discuss it, and don't let it be a one-sided conversation. You need to voice your opinions, voice how you feel in executive session, and discuss the issue that's going on in the village, right? Um, that's, that's your opportunity to get it out and vet it, and then come back and explain your decision as a board. Right? So I really hope you take that opportunity to discuss the issue. On discussion, um, I, I didn't really hear any tonight. It sounds like on the Fifty Clifford Road project, it sounded like you're just waiting for them to dot some i's and cross some t's, and that project's going to move forward. Please discuss that in public also, and try to remember at the last meeting, the amount of comments came from their neighbors from that property who voiced concern over the negligence of the owners, and now the owners want to expand it. What do you think's going to happen then? Um, in the past, the village has turned down more apartments being built in the village. I got to stand by, pass, pass practice, and recommend that you, you do not approve that project for expansion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I wanted to put you back on that. I did come in late, so I didn't hear the comments. Um, I had a conflicting meeting this afternoon. Um, I'm in full agreement with that. Um, I know the, I'm sure the Davis Brothers are very nice guys, but their whole discussion of, we're your neighbors, they're really not. Um, they don't live there. Um, it's going to be their tenants that are there. I've already had, I sent my comments to the board, I won't say a problem to here, but you guys received my comments via email, um, regarding a phone call I personally received from one of the Davis Brothers. Um, to me, that's not showing a good neighbor. Um, that's very concerning that, um, they're trying to do this. I did look at the comprehensive plan for Menance as well, so I know we're trying to expand wetlands. It looked like. I'm not sure if that area back there is a wetland or not, um, but it does make me question if, if we're just waiting now, or if the board is just waiting for them to get their plans in so that you can later approve it. Um, that, that, to me, that calls into question, like, doesn't that impact your ability to expand any wetlands if you're approving this one, and the next one, and the next one? I'm just, I have major concerns with what they are, um, doing, and it's just a lack of faith in their integrity, I guess.
Anyone else? Sure.
Hi, I'm Courtney Jessel. I'm a village resident. Um, the other comment I would make about the apartments just being twenty-four or three units is just the impact on the school, something to keep in mind for future projects. Uh, you know, we're a pretty small school, three hundred kids, uh, pre-grade eight. Um, and we have a lot of turnover. We have a lot of people coming and going, especially in the undergrads, just because there are so many apartments compared to, um, you know, single-family homes. Um, and I know housing shortages are an issue, but just to keep that balance in mind for future planning, um, the number of single-family homes. There's a duplexes, you know, families that are planning on staying for a long time times versus families that are coming and going, if they're in that place in the school.
What is the current capacity of the school?
Um, I have a hard number. We do have room for expansion, for sure. Um, yeah, it's, it's not an issue of capacity so much as, like I said, the turnover. We get kids coming for a month and then going somewhere else. We get kids registering in November. We get, you know, we get a lot of kids in and out because it's an apartment-type situation and not a housing-type situation. I'd love to see affordable, you know, starter homes going into Menance. Um, that would be amazing, um, as opposed to just apartments where people are just there for a few months, or, you know, there for a year or two, and then, you know, the kids, the kids come in and out. It's just extra burden on the teacher and on the, on the kids that, that are there year-round.
And I would say they're saying capacity is generous. I've seen the numbers. Um, and this year, besides eighth grade, we're pretty close to maxed out on two.
We couldn't add.
Right, you could not add extra classrooms without expanding, but, but, you know, but the classes are not overfilled. You know, we have, we have space in each, in, in, in the classrooms. Um, if we had to add a kid room, it would be a problem. Yeah, that's, that's certainly true.
I know.
I'll just add, I mean, I know I sound like a broken record, um, but in addition to that, we also have to remember that Menance is not currently a high school. Um, they're going to Lauren Colony, South Colony, gone through that whole process. They have their pick of where they go, and there's a cost associated to send these kids to these high schools, and it's not, it's not cheap. It's a hefty cost, about fifteen thousand for one student to go, and that is without any, um, special needs. So that is something to consider, and it's something that's going to place a burden on.
So there's law actually about that, and that's the fair housing law. So we have to be very careful about using that as an argument against housing of any kind. So just be careful.
That's fair.
Oh. One thing about. The diagrams I looked at seem to be devoid of detail. Where does the water go? Where's it come from? How much? Seven cubic feet is roughly a fifty-five gallon drop of water per second. That's a lot of water. You know, take seven Stewart's bottles, seven Anther, and that's, that's a one cubic foot. So we're not talking about a small flow. We're talking about a significant volume of water. Each cubic foot weighs sixty-two and a half pounds. So we have not only the water volume, but the weight and the force and the effort. And it seems to me that the plan should be more detailed as to where it's going to go. Just can't double off the end of your property. I don't know somebody else.
Hey, I was rather surprised when they said that DOT was okay with them pushing water up onto DOT property. That was.
I both of mine.
Yeah.
Somebody missed, but I mean, LaBella will address.
Yes.
These issues.
They will.
Okay.
They will address.
Just a thought.
Yeah.
We're here.
Anyone else? Public comment? Sure.
Hi, I'm Lisa Newman. I live in Logan Grove. Uh, I hope you all know that the, the street light by the CDT A bus stop across the village ward is hanging on.
Yeah, we're aware. That's Colony, I believe.
It's kind of dangerous.
Yeah.
Colony, well, at least, just so you know, that's in the town of Colony, and they were aware, they were made aware of it. Something anymore?
Yes, sir.
Multiple times.
Anyone else?
Okay, well, there's one next one where the whole thing is missing too.
Okay.
Wait, I'm not on.
Okay, go ahead. Sorry.
Now the Clifford Grove is, I just want, they're asking for variance to build more.
Oh, the variance was already issued.
It, so they got approval to build more than they should be able.
One point five units more, yes.
Okay. Why wouldn't you just let them build the river out to the.
Good question.
That wasn't this board. That was the zoning board of appeals.
Yeah. Thank you.
Um, we did the public comment.
I have one more question. Not. That's okay?
All right.
So, um, I think it was since, um, May, I've asked about the safety meeting for the trains in our neighborhood. It's a number down, and we still have.
Say it again. I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
The train situation.
Yep, Ryan, Ryan is working on that, and we're going to do a whole, uh, drill in the fall. We're going to, we have a meeting that.
You told me that last month.
We're working on it, Laura. It's in due process. We're going to have a meeting and organize it in the fall.
Just a timeline, Brian. It's a fall meeting on October.
Meetings next week, so it should be.
We have a lot of new families with babies moving in. Three houses have turned over. They all have children. Nobody knows where to go.
All right, but I do want to add that, and so.
I have another long question. Uh, I'd like to know if, who was involved with turning down our appeal? Was it just Steve and Brian? Was it just Steve and Brian? Or was everybody?
So foil requests, you wanna describe the foil process, Steve?
Yeah.
I'm familiar with the foil process. If I need to foil that information.
There's certain exemptions that um, there are certain things that are not discoverable under foil. One of which, of course, is attorney-client, uh, any communications uh that I have with anyone within the village. Um, uh, the village board or any of the department heads or employees. Another thing that's exempt from foil disclosure are any intra uh, I'll call them department, but intra-village communications. So for example, any communications between or among village board members or village board members and clerk or the chief of the fire department. That's what uh the uh foil, the New York State Public Officers Law says, is not discoverable as part of a foil process.
So that means you're not gonna tell them?
That means any communications between village board members is not, not discoverable under foil. That's right.
Ready? Um, after discussion with Susan from the court, uh, it has become necessary for the village to hire uh someone who specifically works with Steve aside from the court uh as an advocate for the prosecution, I guess. Is that adequate framing? Wanna?
Yeah, there, so this was brought up. So what happens is there are a number of uh, uh, we have, twice a month, we have uh traffic court. And every traffic court night, there are approximately thirty or forty files where we allow people to handle everything by mail. Some of them are in state, some of them are represented by council. It makes it easier. If you've ever been here on traffic court night, you would be absolutely amazed at the number of people that attend. Less, we get, we get a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty people show up here twice, twice a month. So it, it is easier for everybody involved to do things by mail. One of the problems that we ran into is, we, we didn't even realize this at the time, is that when I put together a plea memo that's going to be handled by mail, Susan was sending out the letters on village court letterhead with my name on it. Technically needs to be a separation between me and the village judges in the context of what I recommend and what they eventually approve. So uh, there was a discussion with OCA, Office of Court Administration for New York State, and they said you need to create that separation. Susan had a suggestion. There was a young woman that had worked here for a relatively short period of time, but had worked in the court's office and developed a good working relationship uh with Susan, but for a number of reasons had to leave. But apparently uh she might be available. And we're talking about somebody who is going to, she hasn't been approached yet because obviously this is a conversation we're having. It, it looks like it's something that maybe ten to fifteen hours. Uh, is, they might accept emails, uh, put the people in touch with me and handle all of the correspondence that would normally be done by Susan's office, the mail from me.
Yeah, so I have a lot of questions about this, which I think should be taken care of in executive session. Uh, before we move forward on this, if you will.
Okay, sure.
Can we have questions now or?
No.
When do we get that question?
The next public comment meeting.
Regarding that?
Sure. Um, so then we'll, we'll have to answer those questions in executive session and hold, are we gonna hold that? Or do you think there's gonna be action taken after that? We'll see. All right, okay. Um, Don.
Um, in regards, I, I had a lengthy discussion with the Vice President of Operations for CP Rail. Um, I expressed a concern of everybody regarding the ditch, the flex, the, the, the movement of the tracks and everything. And she, they are, they've already put the equipment in place and hopefully this week, she said with the holiday, they're, they were trying to do some of it last week, but they're gonna be working on clearing out the ditch. They also, once a month, they um, they have this special car that goes down and tests the tracks. And everything that, every month that this gets tested and the tracks are all within all the federal guidelines. And they, they said they're not concerned about the tracks at this time. But they will, I explained everybody's concerns and they said that they'll, they'll, they'll keep a closer look at it. So hopefully the float, the drainage problems will be settled. Um, I asked her to give it to me writing, which she did. It'll be, it'll be in the minutes, a copy of the letter that I received from the, the Vice President.
And the, the excavator that's by the tracks right now is, is along the CP Rail.
Yes, so they start this process, but they started digging a new ditch, which has me a little more concerned than starting with just clearing out what was initially there.
I could, I have the Vice President's cell phone, so.
There's also a big plastic bag or something that they left. I don't know, well, I don't know if they left it, but it's in the, you know, just to the uh South of Flipside Avenue. I don't know.
But I know they're gonna clean out the hole.
Yeah, I was watching them start. And the problem is that that area has flooded so much water that the moment they start digging, the water is just flooding up. And I feel like the guys kind of were like, hmm, this is a problem for next week. But they did start a new ditch, not cleaning out the.
Yeah, they're gonna, I mean, they said, because I told them, I said, you know, well, the, the drainage that goes into it, you know, and they, but she said, she assured me it was gonna be taken care of.
Well, I mean, I hope so. This dig in left Menand Road and it's still very bad. And the, and the uh, the drainage pipe that goes under the street is still like probably good seventy percent, you know, still plugged up. So I, you know, if there's any real water coming down, it's not gonna do any help at all.
Well, hopefully this will correct that problem. Wait and see. I mean, I, but I done, I talked to the police, I talked to the road master. I've now talked to the Vice President, so.
Don, anything else?
That's all I got.
Um, we've discussed paving on Menand Road. So uh, instead of doing Brookside and half of Menand Road, I believe we've all agreed that we're gonna do all of Menand Road.
Well, they do, because if there's a price difference, if there's a dual motion.
Okay, so do we know what the current number is? We, we made a motion for.
We made a motion for. It was, I don't know, it was, it was a, for a second one. But to do all Menand Road will be a hundred ninety-seven thousand six hundred and fifty dollars.
And we will be working on the aprons and, and the swales and so on. So that, um, so we need a motion for that.
I make a motion to approve the paving at one hundred and ninety-seven thousand six hundred and fifty dollars for all of Menand Road.
Second. It was a favor. Any opposed? Um, Seven Zocks uh did the trees at the park today.
Are they done?
Yeah, so more.
Are they done?
Uh, besides the stumps, they have to do one tree by the basketball court that's dead and then they're gonna clear a couple of things, but it was better to wait till the ground is frozen.
The other, only concern I had is they left tree, like, like giant tree lands.
They're coming back. They just ran out of room with their.
Okay, okay, because I passed them all leaving and I was like, hey, we still there.
Mike is, Mike wants.
Someone like, like is shaping.
If to burn at those camps. Um, so it's that. Um. I have my. Anyone have anything additional?
Are we not doing number thirteen?
Oh, yeah. Uh, Don and I met with Spectrum uh to talk about getting Wi-Fi at Ganzer Smith Park. It's an ongoing discussion. The initial estimate was way out there.
Yeah, well, they, what they did was.
So we're gonna have to resolve.
Because they wanted to.
Exactly what was specific to the park.
In the bid, they put in phone service for the whole village, the Wi-Fi cameras and everything we talked about. But they, I asked them to put in three different quotes and they put it all together in one, so we're not gonna do it then.
What about the Disney channels today?
No, they don't. No, ESPN, see you.
Uh, so we'll have more information on that going forward.
Thank you for pursuing that.
Yeah, I think it's Wi-Fi at the park would be great.
Yes.
Um, as a hotspot. Anyone else have anything for regular meeting?
Uh, well, just wanted to mention that, uh, you know, as you already know, that Vett and I uh got the uh, the Greenway grants submitted and uh, I think we're off to running on that.
Yeah, I, I saw that and I, I think that's an awesome initiative. Thank you for all the work.
Oh, you're welcome. I, well, Matt was like, I wrote something and Matt re-wrote it and had to chase the rest.
Okay. He knows what he's, he knows what he's doing, so.
I had language. He had great language.
Yeah. A, any improvement that he can make is.
But, but out of the case, yeah, it was, yeah.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Um, all right, we did receive and I did send to the board members a, a copy of the um pilot agreement that is in the works for the Thirty-Five Broadway project. Um, I have a follow-up letter that I received today that I will forward to the board. Basically describing uh the schedule that they're proposing to colonize. Um, I have some questions about it, so as soon as I send this to the board, uh, we can discuss those at a later date. This is the soldier on project, which is not, this is not a surprise.
Right.
Uh, it was intended. Um, let's see the best. Uh, we, do you wanna talk about leak detection?
Um, the board, we, or the board approved us to have leak detection. It was completed in a week. They found seven leaks and one of them was, two of them were servants' lines to people's houses and Nicole had already sent out letters to the residents on that they have to have that looked back and has to be repaired. The other ones are, um, one's gonna be taken care of on Broadway by Menand Road. That's gonna be fixed. And then the other ones, we're having questions about whether to do it now because it's in the South End.
So Twenty-three Wolfher we're gonna hit. Because that's a large one.
Yeah.
But the, the others, the others, Mike is concerned about opening a can of worms.
Yeah.
And blowing out a larger section. Um, one, we're about to embark on that, so, um.
But also one, Tim, I, you had a question, right, about one of them?
Yeah, I, I, didn't we already have work done in Clifford Road and Broadway a while back? Is this a different?
Not because, yeah, it's a different league.
And it was in the same, it looked like the same.
It's in the general, same general area. They, it was right in front of Connie's house. And we had those.
And this is just adding a little further. All right. That, that was my main thing, you know, other than that, I just kinda was wanting to make sure that the same gal didn't blow up again. Right.
Uh, I think that's just about it. Anyone else on the board have anything I'd like to discuss? We have several matters for executive session.
Uh, legal matters.
Legal personnel.
So I uh, I moved that we enter executive session to discuss uh a legal matter and a personnel matter.
All those a favor? Anywhere opposed? Thank you.
Yeah, like your shirt. Yeah.
Have a good night. Have a good night. Give my best, give my best to you, Joe.
All right.